The meeting will come to order. Reverend Dixon, Mayor Lake Bolwood, council members, council members of the House. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
This is the year 2013 Organization Meeting of the City Council of the City of Elizabeth. Notice of this meeting was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2012, and a copy of this notice was sent to Starletter, Home News Tribune, and Cablevision of Elizabeth in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law of New Jersey. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the opening prayer to be delivered by Reverend Valerie Ann Dixon of York County, Chairman, AMD Church of Elizabeth.
As we pray, gracious and loving God, Creator of all life, we give you thanks now for this new season, for this new day, for this new year. We're allowed together for another gender one in these chambers to establish and organize the government of Elizabeth for another year. For all your goodness of 2012, our God, we say thank you even for the hard times. We say thank you because you brought them through us. You brought us through sandy storm and you brought us through sandy hook. And now, God, we pray that this year, or 2013, that you might be our rock, you might be our foundation, that you might be our anchor as we move into this new year, that you may bring us new hopes, new aspirations. We thank our God for the 150th anniversary of the signing of the Emancipation Propofession that really made this nation the land of the free. And so, God, as we have the free people gather here in these chambers, we pray now for the mayor of this city, that you might direct him, our God, and he lead the city into a new year. For the president of council, our God, that he would take the hill for this year. Councilman William Gollman, who might, let's see, our God, that he might gain respect of his colleagues, our God, that he lead them in these chambers. For this city, our God, we pray that you might someday allow your spirit to be with us, that where there's wrong, you might fix it, our God, take us to a new merit, that was our God, that has to be a city, that has to be a community. Bless us now as we gather this together, that Jesus rest in thy name we pray. Amen.
Heavenly remain standing and join him beside him in the pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly remain standing. The National Anthem will be sung by Miss Emily Kirk.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose brush stripes and bright stars blew the hair of the skies Where the railroads we watched were so gallantly streaming Ever again's our ever the bombs burst in air gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star singe o'er the land of the free in the home of the brave?
I would like to introduce the Honorable Call El Marshall, Judge, Municipal Court, City of Elizabeth. Judge Marshall has graciously consented to administer the oath of office. Please be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I would like to introduce and ask to come forward to be sworn in to begin her sixth consecutive term on the City Council, Councilwoman-elect Patricia Perkins-Adesty.
I am Patricia Perkins-Adesty. Do some swears. That I will support. That I will support. Constitution. The Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. Of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. To the same. And to the government. And to the government established in the United States. In the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. And that I will faithfully. And I will faithfully. In impartial. In impartial. And justly. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office of. Of the office of. Councilwoman Edith. Councilwoman Edith. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my abilities. So help me God. So help me God.
Chambers and remain standing for the Honorable Romane Montez, Chief Judge, Municipal Court, City of Elizabeth. Judge Montez has graciously consented to administer the oath of office. Please be seated. I would like to introduce and ask to come forward to be sworn in to begin his fourth term on the City Council, Councilman-elect Frank J. Questa. Joining him will be his wife Karen and their son. Heavenly see one. Christopher.
I, Frank Questa. I, Frank Questa. Usallum is where. Usallum is where. That I will support. That I will support. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. To the government. And to the government established in the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. And that I will faithfully. And I will faithfully. In impartial. In impartial. And justly. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office of. Of the office of. Councilman Edith. Councilman Edith. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my abilities. So help me God. So help me God.
terms, and two years of his fifth term as the first ward in council. I would like to introduce and ask to come forward to be sworn in to begin his first term on City Council in his new seat as at-large, Councilman-elect Manny Grover-Grover.
I, Manny Grover-Grover. I am, Usallum is where. Usallum is where. That I will support. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. To the same. To the same. And the government established. And the government established. In the United States. In the United States. And in this state. Under the authority. Under the authority of the people. And that I will faithfully. And I will faithfully. In impartial. In impartial. And justly. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office. Of the office of Councilman Edith. Councilman Edith. According to the best of my abilities. According to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Please be seated. The 2013 Honorable Members of City Council of the City of Elizabeth, full call. Councilwoman Perkins-Adesty. Here. Councilman Questa. Here. Councilman Grover. Here. Councilman Gonzalez. Here. Councilman Keenan. Here. Councilman Sedano. Here. Councilman Grover. Here. Councilman Mazzan. Here. Amen. The first order of business will be the election of a temporary president of the City Council. Are there any nominations?
It's my pleasure, it's my pleasure, to nominate Councilman Manny Grover.
Are there any other nominations? Councilman Grover, having been nominated, and there being no other nominations, I will cast a necessary ballot, electing Councilman Grover as temporary president of the City Council.
Good afternoon, all. We just ended a very tough year in this country, in this city, and I want, at this point in time, we have for my family, extend to all of you a happy and safe new year. I also would be remiss if I don't recognize our services, our public employees, who have worked so hard in the last few months as we confronted the Sandy Hurricane in this city, and to them, I'd ask all of you to give them a round of applause. I also want to congratulate Mayor Bolwood for his election and soon to be sworn in as continuing to do a great job in the City of Elizabeth, and I'm glad that we have such a nice crowd out here today to witness this. At this point in time, I will conduct the election for president of the City Council for the year 2013. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President.
Councilman Keenan.
I have the honor of nominating Councilman William Gollman as president for the year 2013.
Are there any other nominations? Councilman Gollman, having been nominated, and there being no other nominations, I will, at this time, cast a necessary ballot, electing Councilman William Gollman Jr., president of the City Council for the year 2013.
We sit at home for breakfast. Ladies and generous, good afternoon and happy new year to you all. And I would like to thank my City Council colleagues for electing me to be council president for 2013. Let me just say, it's an honor and a privilege to serve with all of you. Let me take this time to officially congratulate Councilman Grover, Weston, and Councilwoman Edith, Patricia Perkins-Adesty, on the election and council at large. Congratulations to our very own Mayor Chris Bowles, despite a hard fought ballot, who won the primary by 76% of the votes. It's obvious to me, and many others, that the mayor and his team are doing a great job in leading this city of Elizabeth in the right direction. In a few minutes, you'll hear all the great things that have happened in this city of Elizabeth in the last year, but more important, you'll hear what this administration has stored for the city in the future. I like to say that behind every great mayor, there's a great City Council. We may not always agree, but it's obvious by the reelection that the residents approve of the work Mayor Bolwood and this City Council is undertaking. It's easy to look good when times are good and funding is available, but true leadership is tested when times are tough and money is tight. When city laid off workers, first responders, we hired workers. When city couldn't afford improvement projects, we upgraded roads, sewers, and our infrastructure. When city cut program, we maintained service for all residents. When city wondered how they would survive without money, we kept working toward better times. All this doesn't happen by accident. It takes vision, dedication, partnership, and most importantly, important leadership. So I would like to thank the mayor for leading us through these trying times, and thank you to my colleagues for their dedication to the resident of Elizabeth. I would like to recognize everyone who helped during the superstorm Sandy. I would like to acknowledge all of those that helped feed our senior citizen population during the crisis. I'd like to thank Public Works, did a great job cleaning up all the debris and debris that was down. Emergency personnel did a great job keeping residents safe, and the mayor did a great job keeping residents informed and up to date during the entire storm and during recovery. We may have been battered, bruised, but we bounced back because we are meant to be there. According to the Star Legion, many of the municipal academy break down and communication, leave the resident in the dark, no point intended, but through the tight leadership I was talking about before, we were prepared for such emergency, and we had invested in technology to be able to communicate with a large number of residents. Of course, with every mayor, major event, we can always learn something new about where we need to improve. I notice that our citizens were wearing house displays, like generators, and senior houses and buildings went too long without power. Ladies and generous, we cannot go forward in the future this way. I make it my new year's mission to work with my colleagues of City Council, housing authorities, and administration to put a plan in place that will ensure we have after generation, generator power in case of such emergency, and find funding to help with the purchase and installation of the system. One last item I would like, I would like everyone to know that this City Council is committed to work with the mayor in his effort. With mayor against illegal guns, leading this department, US Conference of Mayors, making sure a pistol gun installation is passed. We need to make sure gun doesn't end up in the wrong hand and alter the war as served in our country. Ladies and generous, we have to stop. It's too long, every other year, an elected officer cannot stand on corners and speak to constituents unless they've been gunned down by mass violence. You cannot go to local movies and enjoy movies unless they're massive violent. And last but not least, up in Newtown, Connecticut, we've lost 20 young kids that don't even know what life is all about. You'll never know what life is all about. And those other adults that lost their life, cutting out short. We have to find a resolution for all this banks. I would like to ask for a moment of silence to remember all the victims of gun violence, especially 20 children in Newtown, Connecticut, and also, last but not least, I'd like also to remember, and this, when we stand up, for a moment of silence, include the late freeholder Chester Hall. Amen. At this time, the floor is open for President of City Council for a vote taken. Any nomination?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, it's my honor to nominate Councilman Manny Grover for president of Tootown for the year 2013.
Are there any other nominations? See, I cast every single ballot for this nomination. I'd like to make this call to Manny Grover to be voted in for 2013. At this time, it gives me great honor to appoint someone to be our floor leader for 2013, and I'm quite sure she'll do a great job of being our floor leader for 2013, so I'd like to appoint Councilwoman Edith, health of Councilwoman Patricia Perkins-Adesty. At this time, would you please stand? I'm about to leave my purse to go leave the grave in place. I'd like to appoint Councilwoman Justice Gonzalez, the second one to lead the prayer and put you down, Justice Gonzalez. At this time, will we all stand here and receive the Honorable Romane Montez, Chief Judge, Municipal Court, City of Elizabeth, to administer the oath of office to our Honorable Mayor, David Christopher Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. Usallum is where. Usallum is where. That I will support. That I will support. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. And to the government. And to the government. Established in the United States. Established in the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority. Under the authority. Of the people. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. In impartial. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office of mayor. Of the office of mayor. According. According. To the best of my abilities. So help me God. So help me God. Heavenly see one. At this time, will we all stand here and receive the Honorable Romane Montez, Chief Judge, Municipal Court, City of Elizabeth, to administer the oath of office to our Honorable Mayor, David Christopher Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. Usallum is where. Usallum is where. That I will support. That I will support. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. And to the government. And to the government. Established in the United States. Established in the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority. Under the authority. Of the people. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. In impartial. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office of mayor. Of the office of mayor. According. According. To the best of my abilities. So help me God. So help me God. Heavenly see one. At this time, will we all stand here and receive the Honorable Romane Montez, Chief Judge, Municipal Court, City of Elizabeth, to administer the oath of office to our Honorable Mayor, David Christopher Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. Usallum is where. Usallum is where. That I will support. That I will support. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. And to the government. And to the government. Established in the United States. Established in the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority. Under the authority. Of the people. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. In impartial. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office of mayor. Of the office of mayor. According. According. To the best of my abilities. So help me God. So help me God. Heavenly see one. At this time, will we all stand here and receive the Honorable Romane Montez, Chief Judge, Municipal Court, City of Elizabeth, to administer the oath of office to our Honorable Mayor, David Christopher Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. Usallum is where. Usallum is where. That I will support. That I will support. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. And to the government. And to the government. Established in the United States. Established in the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority. Under the authority. Of the people. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. In impartial. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office of mayor. Of the office of mayor. According. According. To the best of my abilities. So help me God. So help me God. Heavenly see one. At this time, will we all stand here and receive the Honorable Romane Montez, Chief Judge, Municipal Court, City of Elizabeth, to administer the oath of office to our Honorable Mayor, David Christopher Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. Usallum is where. Usallum is where. That I will support. That I will support. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. And to the government. And to the government. Established in the United States. Established in the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority. Under the authority. Of the people. And that I will faithfully. And that I will faithfully. In impartial. And justly. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. Of the office of mayor. Of the office of mayor. According. According. To the best of my abilities. So help me God. So help me God. Heavenly see one. At this time, will we all stand here and receive the Honorable Romane Montez, Chief Judge, Municipal Court, City of Elizabeth, to administer the oath of office to our Honorable Mayor, David Christopher Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. I, J. Krishna Bowles. Usallum is where. Usallum is where. That I will support. That I will support. Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance. And allegiance. And to the government. And to the government. Established in the United States.
to serve as Director of the Elizabeth Fire Department. Subject to the confirmation of your honorable body, I hereby reappoint Ms. Bridget Zellner Linden to serve as Business Administrator. Subject to the confirmation of your honorable body, I hereby reappoint Carl L. Marshall Esquire, Elizabeth, to serve as the Judge of the Municipal Court for a term of three years effective January 1, 2013. Subject to the confirmation of your honorable body, I hereby appoint Mr. Duport Justache, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Elizabeth Parking Authority for a five-year term. Subject to the confirmation of your honorable body, I hereby reappoint Ms. Christina Otamendi, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Elizabeth Parking Authority for a five-year term. Subject to the confirmation of your honorable body, I hereby appoint Councilman William Baldwin Jr., Elizabeth, to serve as a Class 3 member of the Planning Board for a one-year term. Subject to the confirmation of your honorable body, I hereby make the following reappointments to the Board of Adjustment. I hereby reappoint George A. Castro II, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment for a new term of four years. I hereby reappoint Salto Aracaca, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment for a new term of four years. I hereby reappoint Jose Nunez, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment for a new term of four years. I hereby reappoint Reverend Larry M. Dixon, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment, alternate number one, for a new term of two years. I hereby reappoint Elizabeth Canna, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment, alternate number two, for a new term of two years. Subject to the confirmation of your honorable body, I hereby make the following reappointments and appointments to the Insurance Fund Commission. I hereby reappoint Ronald Powell Esquire, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Insurance Fund Commission for a new term of two years. I hereby reappoint Mr. Paul Lesniak, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Insurance Fund Commission for a new two-year term. I also appoint Ms. Marie Kopinski, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Insurance Fund Commission for a term of two years. Please be advised that I am making the following appointment to the Board of Trustees of the Free Public Library. I am appointing Ms. Kenyatta E. Jackson, Elizabeth, to serve as a trustee of the Free Public Library to fill the unexpired term for Ms. Helen Altebelle, who has recently resigned. Please be advised that I am making the following appointment to the Board of Trustees of the Free Public Library, appointing Mr. Kennedy Weaver, Elizabeth, to serve as a trustee of the Free Public Library for a five-year term. I hereby reappoint Maria Z. Carvalho, Elizabeth, to serve as a Class 2 member of the Planning Board for a new term of one year. I hereby reappoint Gordon Hosky, Elizabeth, to serve as a Class 4 member of the Planning Board for a new term of four years. I hereby appoint Charles T. Shawcross, Elizabeth, to serve as a Class 4 member of the Planning Board for a term of four years. I hereby reappoint Thomas Urban, Elizabeth, to serve as a Class 4 member of the Planning Board for a new term of four years. I hereby appoint Norma Marcelo Nunez, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Planning Board to fill the unexpired term of Commissioner Thomas Callahan, who has recently resigned. I hereby reappoint Georgette Gonzalez, Elizabeth, to serve as my designated Elizabeth Planning Board. I hereby appoint Mr. Isaiah Rivera, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Planning Board, alternate number one, for a term of two years. I hereby appoint Rosa Marina, to serve as a member of the Planning Board, alternate number two, for a term of two years. Sincerely, J. Krishna Bowles, Mayor, which was received.
Without the loss of this.
Advising consent to the appointment of Ms. Krishna H. Barbour, Elizabeth, to serve as Director of Health and Human Services. Advising consent to the reappointment of Mr. Paul Adessa, Elizabeth, to serve as Director of Recreation. Advising consent to the reappointment of Mr. James Cosgrove, Island, to serve as Director of Elizabeth Police Department. Advising consent to the reappointment of William Hozapple Esquire, Elizabeth, to serve as City Attorney and Director of the Department of Law. Advising consent to the reappointment of Mr. John Capete Jr., Elizabeth, to serve as Director of Public Works. Advising consent to the reappointment of Mr. William Reyes Jr., Mountain Side, to serve as Director of Planning and Community Development. Advising consent to the reappointment of Mr. Anofrio Fatullo, Elizabeth, to serve as Director of the Elizabeth Fire Department. Advising consent to the reappointment of Ms. Bridget Zellner Linden to serve as the Business Administrator. Advising consent to the reappointment of Carl L. Marshall Esquire, Elizabeth, to serve as a Judge of the Municipal Court for a term of three years effective January 1, 2013. Advising consent to the appointment of Mr. Duport Justache, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Elizabeth Parking Authority for a five-year term. Advising consent to the appointment of Ms. Christina Otamendi, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Elizabeth Parking Authority for a five-year term. Advising consent to the appointment of Councilman William Baldwin Jr., Elizabeth, to serve as a Class 3 member of the Planning Board for a one-year term. Advising consent to the reappointment of George A. Castro II, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment for a new term of four years. Advising consent to the reappointment of Salto Aracaca, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment for a new term of four years. Advising consent to the reappointment of Jose Nunez, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment for a new term of four years. Advising consent to the appointment of Reverend Larry M. Dixon, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment, alternate number one, for a new term of two years. Advising consent to the reappointment of Commissioner Elizabeth Canna, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Board of Adjustment, alternate number two, for a new term of two years. Advising consent to the reappointment of Rocco DePaul Esquire, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Insurance Fund Commission for a new term of two years. Advising consent to the reappointment of Mr. Paul Lesniak, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Insurance Fund Commission for a new two-year term. And advising consent to the appointment of Ms. Marie Kopinski, Elizabeth, to serve as a member of the Insurance Fund Commission for a term of two years.
Yeah, I agree with the resolution. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolutions to the floor, Mr. President.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilwoman Gonzalez. Move that second. Go on.
Councilwoman Perkins, the dusting.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Assistant Judge Marshall. I agree with the answer.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Sedan.
Aye.
Councilman Mather.
Aye.
President Paul.
Aye, arise, all speakers present. At this time, I ask for J. Krishna Bowles to escort the office to all the appointments.
First, I'd like to introduce Ms. Bridget Zellner, Business Administrator.
Hi, Bridget Zellner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of Business Administrator.
Of the Office of Business Administrator.
And the same ability.
And the same ability.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I would like to introduce Mr. William R. Hozapple Esquire, City Attorney.
I, William R. Hozapple Esquire.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the City Attorney and Director of the Law Department.
According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability.
Ms. Krishna, H. Barbour, Director.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly. Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of Director of Health and Human Services.
Of the Office of Director of Health and Human Services.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Mr. William R. Reyes Jr., Director of Planning and Community Development.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state. And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of Director of Planning and Community Development.
Of the Office of Director of Planning and Community Development.
According to the best of my ability.
Mr. John Capete Jr., Director of Public Works.
I, Councilman.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the government. And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of Director of Public Works.
Of the Office of Director of Public Works.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Mr. Paul Adessa, Director of Recreation.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state. And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
The Director of Recreation.
The Director of Recreation.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Mr. Anofrio Fatullo, Director of Elizabeth Fire Department.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same
And to the governments established in the United States
And the governments established in the United States
And in this state
And in this state
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties
Perform all the duties
The Director of Elizabeth Fire Department
The Director of Elizabeth Fire Department
According to the best of my ability
Mr. James Charles Brooks, Director, Elizabeth Police Department
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And to the governments established in the United States
And the governments established in the United States Under the authority of the people And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties
Perform all the duties
Of the Office of Director According to the best of my ability
Mr. Daniel J. Loomis, Municipal Engineer
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same
And to the governments established in the United States
And the governments established in the United States
Under the authority of the people And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties
For the Office of Municipal Engineer
According to the best of my ability
The following Board of Adjustment Members, Mr. George J. Castro II, Mr. Salvatore Coppa, Mr. Jose Nunez, Reverend Larry Dixon, and Ms. Elizabeth Cannon
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same And to the governments established in the United States
And the governments established in the United States
Under the authority of the people And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
And justly
Board of Adjustment Member
Board of Adjustment Member
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
The Board of the Trustees for Republic Library, Ms. Kendyette Lee Jackson and Mr. Kevin Lee Weeder
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same
And to the governments established in the United States
Established in the United States
And in this state
Under the authority of the people
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties
For all the members of the Board of Trustees
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
The Elizabeth Parking Authority, Mr. Duport Doosaw, Ms. Christina Adamant
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same
And to the governments established in the United States
And the governments established in the United States
And in this state
Under the authority of the people
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
For all the duties
For all the duties Of the Office of Member of Elizabeth Parking
Of the Office of Member of Elizabeth Parking
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
Insurance Fund Commission, Rockup de Power, and Fire, Mr. Paul Lesniak, and Ms. Marie Crepinczi Plane Board, Councilman William Galvin Jr., Ms. Maria Carvalho, Mr. Gordon Haas, Mr. Charles T. Shellcross, Mr. Thomas Urban, Ms. Norma Marcela Nunez, Ms. Georgette Gonzalez, Mr. Isaias Rivera, and Ms. Wilkes Delmarah
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same
And to the governments established in the United States
Established in the United States
And in this state
Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
And justly
Perform all the duties
For all the duties
Of the Office of Member of Plane
Of the Office of Member of Plane
According to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
Let's give all that we want to give Reverend Swanson. At this time, may give me great pleasure to introduce some to present to other. And our own Mayor, J. Christian Bowitz, and the Chief of Staff.
Thank you, good afternoon. First of all, I want to thank Reverend Dixon for the prayer and the benediction. Thank you very much, Reverend. I also want to welcome the Seventh Woman, Annette Kiano, for the 20th district, who has joined us here at Seventh Woman. Thank you. Freeholder Boarder here, Freeholder Dan Sullivan, and Freeholder Angel Estrada. Thank you. County Manager, Mr. Alfiaella. Thank you. And the President of King University, Dr. Zawil Farahi. Reverend Clarity, and members of City Council, the elected officials, friends, family, and citizens. 2012 has been an eventful and unprecedented year for our city. From new development and jobs to a historic hurricane, the City of Elizabeth always rises to the occasion. Communicating vital information and creating opportunities serving our residents. Together, we accomplish this by sharing our creativity, assisting our neighbors, and revitalizing our community. Because we are a city that transforms ideas into action, grows with committed partners, and moves forward with determination. Your leadership is defined by many things: a strong vision, successful management of resources, and the ability to get things done. The future of our city demands no less: leaders who are capable, hardworking, and ready to take action. This year, we will initiate new projects, strengthen services, bring more progress, and create a stronger, more exciting future for our city. It all begins with the protection that our residents deserve and expect. And in 2012, our first responders were there safeguarding lives. Seventeen new police recruits were hired and assigned throughout our city. This additional manpower, property crime, burglary, and theft were down 13%, and overall crime was down 23%. More than 20,000 incidents required response last year, and our public safety forces must be prepared to meet future challenges that our city faces. Some of you may remember when a car collided on Route 1 and 9 one early winter morning. The Elizabeth Police, the Fire, the EMS were first on the scene, not only managing the scene, but evacuating Givens Court and making sure the area was secure. More personnel. Access to state-of-the-art equipment can be life-saving. A $1.7 million phone delivery unit capable of producing 2,000 gallons of finished phone. 80,000 oxygen filling stations supporting personnel and improving operations. And with the 22 new firefighters that the Elizabeth Fire Department has is stronger than ever. And just as our emergency services require the necessary tools and preparation to be at the top of their performance, our young people require instruction, guidance, and opportunities to succeed. 2012 brought the closure of St. Patrick's, one of the oldest schools in our city. 2012 brought the closure of St. Patrick's, one of the oldest schools in our city. I worked closely with the school administration and members of city council in an effort to keep the school open. Writing letters to the Archbishop, I even wrote one to the Pope. Achieving nationwide recognition, St. Patrick's had been a testament to the level of ability and competitiveness that can be offered by Catholic schools. Months later, promise was ignited for a new future, and history was made in our city. Strengthening educational opportunities for our residents, the Patrick School opened on Morris Avenue. And it's repurposed into an active learning center for our young people, and this school marks a momentous occasion for our city. Continuing traditions and providing role models that connect our community's future with education and character-building experience is the office on you. Our Building Future Leaders program hosted three SAT classes, participated in volunteer and service projects, focusing on plans for achievement, identifying personal and professional goals. Our SURE and St. David programs work closely with the city students to broaden horizons and support growth. Three hundred and fifty middle school students were sent to summer camp to learn about conflict resolution, developing positive life skills. And as our young people strengthen their ability to work together and express themselves, our seniors are sharpening technical and language proficiency, excelling in performing and visual arts. They also showcase... My wife told me this morning that I am a woman, so I'm not going to lie. They also showcased their talents in a multicultural choir that sang at events, churches, municipal buildings, as well as fashion shows where they modeled their designs. And just as our city strengthens the services provided to our seniors, our seniors volunteer their time to support our community. They walked in October to raise breast cancer awareness, participated in the first Community Senior Outreach Day. With the ongoing challenges of our economy, free vaccinations, treatments, and screenings are strengthening the health of our residents. More than 2,500 children with free dental services, 1,300 immunizations and vaccinations. Receiving the proper medical and preventive care is also important to maintaining the overall wellness, particularly with babies and children. Public health, their needs need to be met, and they are through the baby-keep well clinics, the child health conferences, physical examinations, nutritional services to keep our youngest residents strong. The Elizabeth Town Healthcare Foundation has provided a $10,000 grant that will enable 350 infant CPR anytime kits to be distributed, strengthening lifesaving skills. With the third-largest nursing school in the country, Trinacost is increasing the number of trained professionals within our city, graduating 131 new nurses and receiving two Centers of Excellence designations from the National League of Nursing. Our comprehensive fitness is vital to leading long and productive lives in our city. The Recreation Department continues to offer programs that support strong and active ability. Not only do they manage eighteen playgrounds and five centers throughout our community, they supply free lunches to more than 1,400 children every day. Operate an in-ground pool, seven spray fountains, and Union County's largest municipal spray park. Encouraging exercising and skill development, they co-sponsor youth basketball tournaments and made sure that baseball, softball, and soccer was available at all of our local fields for young people. It makes our residents to try new things, and for some, they get to develop enjoyable lasting hobbies. The Recreation Department continues to receive an overwhelming response for the children's dance program, arts and craft classes. Design is underway for a new Holland Playground and Skate Park for youngsters. A synthetic turf field at Orion Playground which will increase soccer availability, along with interior and exterior renovations to the X-Laden Pool. Building stronger communities requires investments in affordable housing. And the housing authority in our city is working hard to increase opportunities and strengthen existing structures. Kitchen renovations at Brown Black Manor, elevator upgrades at Tegley Arms, and Old Dollar Dempsey Towers. One of the challenges associated with housing in an urban environment is not just to identify physical locations, it is in making the new construction affordable. And our Elizabeth Home and Food Program is strengthening housing opportunities. The 805 East Village Street and Salon Home Care Project have created seventeen new units.
In the community and the city of Elizabeth, I actually have a place that I'm proud of. I love calling this place home. It gives me a great sense of community, and it's a great way to start a new year for me, like something new, positive. I'm in love with my place. I feel safe. There's a lot of neighborhood kids around that makes it playful and nice to live there. As long as you stay positive and don't go too far off the lane, you'll meet other nice people. I like it. I like Elizabeth. I like it. I fit in well here.
Including the city's first African-American cultural and education center, artwork and historical data, along with training and readiness programs.
My name is Armando J. Diarico. I'm the owner of NJ Community Development Group, LLC. NJ Community Development Group decided to invest in Elizabeth because we believe Elizabeth is a place of business opportunity. The Ender Street Project is a multi-phase project where ourselves and our partners with the city of Elizabeth and the county of Union helped compile the funding necessary to revitalize this area and neighborhood, to rehabilitate these houses, did structural improvements as well as cosmetic improvements to them. Elizabeth is a great place for a business to invest in because of its strong leadership, cultural diversity, for us, it's really, so to speak, a no-brainer.
The $17 million E-Port Homes Project will produce 52 affordable housing units. You know, renovations of overwood's Plaza is extremely difficult, but that has never stopped our city before. The strength of our commitment and dedicated partners are turning this vision into a reality. One building has been demolished, and current structures will be transformed into new developments. Town style, townhouse-style homes, improved layouts, and energy-efficient systems. Whether you live here, you travel to Elizabeth for work, or you just visit our municipality, our city is always moving. Strengthening foundations is essential to having an effective flow of transportation and improved quality of life. From paving projects to street skate initiatives, the Department of Public Works has made significant investments in our infrastructure and our neighborhoods. With Groundwork Elizabeth completed Phase 1 of the Elizabeth River Trail, and Phase 2 is in the designing stage, providing greater options for navigating our city. The Elizabeth Park Program has supported our low-grain initiatives, reducing energy consumption and overall cost with green technology. In recent years, our community has been subjected to stronger weather patterns that have brought intense rain and flooding. And to mitigate these issues, Public Works has awarded drainage improvements that have been made on the low areas of North Avenue and South Street, Third Avenue, between Lieutenant Lenz Orstey Drive and South First Street. And in partnership with E-Town Services, the combined shore and flood control improvements were made on Westfield Avenue and Park Avenues along Bellwood Place. For years, many Elizabeth residents had to travel across the city to meet their grocery needs, resulting in additional time and money spent. We worked with the Elizabeth Development Company to address this issue, create new jobs, and strengthen options. In December, we cut the ribbon at Superfood Supermarket, featuring the Deli, fresh food kiosk, and delivery services for the residents.
We started investing in Eliza, a girl who's been here for 18 years, and we look at us and study, and we know the population of Eliza and the surrounding areas. Eliza is a great place for investment because the population is small, and people are different. And Eliza is a definite company to us, and we're interested about the area, and we support the program, and they talk to us about how to find a home there.
So it's not way to to this vision there now that they are.
Many throughout our city and state still cannot find employment, and they are now faced with unemployment benefits that are set to expire. Creating jobs for our residents and putting people back to work in this challenging economy remains a priority. We embarked on two new jobs initiatives last year, Elizabeth Hires and Elizabeth Works. More than 200 city residents were hired to perform public works to reach throughout our neighborhoods. From cleaning sidewalks, removing debris, to grading our streets, the Elizabeth Hires Program provided individuals with a job where skills could be honed, experience gained, and income earned. This successful program received an overwhelming response because it placed power in residents first. Elizabeth Works focused upon providing our young people with opportunities made possible through the Union County Workforce Investment Act, and supported by our freeholders that are here. They've worked hand-in-hand with the Elizabeth Development Company. Youth throughout our city were placed with local organizations and businesses. From Groundwork Elizabeth and Boxwood Hall to Adamantia and Bayway Kingdom, this program introduced our youth to the responsibilities of work and rewards that could be reaped from experience.
The program has really done wonders for us. Growing up on the streets myself, I know what kind of issues we could have growing up in the middle of the city. But it's been an absolute great experience for us because I'm able to get these kids off the street and come and teach them a career that could turn into something later on in life.
I went to Thomas Edison High School in Elizabeth, New Jersey. I did college level schooling at Baker. So before the job wasn't helping because I wasn't familiar. I support myself.
I would definitely recommend Elizabeth Works because it's a great program, helping out in the community, getting these kids off the streets, giving them something to do, because that's what makes a small business like myself really flourish and what's made me successful. It's not about me, it's about the people I've worked with.
I understand that she was in the audience, she's now managing that store. The chances of being considered for employment have increased if you've already been trained. The Retail Skills Center has been opening doors and strengthening resumes by providing opportunities to increase knowledge and abilities. Twenty-three job fairs, 164 residents have been trained, and 464 have been placed in jobs.
The Retail Skills Center changed my life. When I got in the military, I was really hesitant, like, would I be able to get a job right away? What would be the process? And coming here, it was like, really quick to me. My major is sports management, so I thought sports sales would be a great job for me. When I picked up Retail Skills Center, they kind of sat me down and went through the process, listened to the job, how to post my resume, I learned about customer service, how to talk to people. So by the time I did the interview, it was no problem. Walking around, I was born here, so I could see the process that's coming, and I wanted to play that process. It is my whole time. Whatever happens here, I want to participate, that and the process.
Embarking upon a $30 million renovation, Jersey Gardens has made great strides in transforming experience. Completion of a rooftop solar system, updated flooring, lighting, signage, enhancing the shopping experience, providing more jobs, Wi-Fi hotspots, Lamso, Puma, and Coach, and the largest Tommy Hilfiger outlet in the entire world. Throughout the years, hotels, restaurants, and even the movie theater have joined this spectacular landscape in Elizabeth. A new Applebee's in 2012, hiring 91 residents, featuring public safety departments and local schools on the boards within the restaurant. And coming soon across the street, if you've been out there, will be a new Embassy Suites. This $40 million gate-story development will create 50 new permanent jobs, includes 189 rooms, multifunctional meeting space, fitness center, and indoor pool. You know, some of you may remember when we built them all, and some on the city council who are no longer here said it would adversely impact smaller businesses. That did not happen. Our special improvement districts continue to thrive in this city. Elizabeth Avenue has a 96% occupancy rate, is welcoming new businesses that are succeeding within our city. Elizabeth Fitness, the Flower Puff 2, Casablanca Supermarket. The Elizabeth Avenue Partnership has worked closely with us to implement beautification, security, street cleaning initiatives. From Catherine Street to Route 19, improvements were incorporated with new sidewalks, curbing, decorative lighting, completing a five-phase street skate project. Providing Jersey fresh fruits, vegetables, baked goods. The farmer's market in our city brings vendors from near and far to showcase their products. Approximately 5,000 win checks were processed, and nearly 3,000 senior vouchers were accepted. The Greater Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce is strengthening business connections and raising awareness with their Go Elizabeth NJ e-newsletter. It features tourist attractions, neighborhood profiles of our city, developed to strengthen the visibility of our community. This initiative will also include reader interaction and contests for subscribers. It leads up to the 350th anniversary of Elizabeth in 2014. You know, in the fall, an unprecedented superstorm made landfall in New Jersey. Hurricane Sandy arrived with a force unlike we've ever seen in our lifetime. High winds uplifted trees, utility lines were down, traffic lights were out. Flooding from the Elizabeth River in our waterfront, and the marina as we knew it is gone. Rushing water, an unparalleled storm surge forced our border wall to be broken into pieces. Our pier was washed away, and our debris covered the area. Gas restrictions were implemented, and the damage throughout our city was empty. However, that did not compare to the power that was lost for weeks. Cold and without heat, many of our residents struggled to stay warm. There was no electricity, many lost significant food when refrigerators had to be empty. There was no electricity, many lost significant food when refrigerators had to be empty. This was an emergency that our city had never experienced, but we were ready. Water rescues were made downtown, City Hall firehouses ran on generator power, shelters and charging stations were open throughout the city. And I remain in communication with the residents during this crisis through our website, our social media, and reverse line 111 calls. And as soon as Hurricane Sandy occurred, I reached out to PSCNG and asked for a schedule when power would be restored. There are fifty-one thousand PSCNG accounts in the City of Elizabeth, and in excess of forty-nine thousand were without power on the day after the storm. I spoke with PSCNG multiple times a day, fighting for residents and the safety of our community. I initiated a social media campaign to garner support for five-off, credit-on legislation. An online petition, I asked our New Jersey legislators and our governor to actually sign a bill which enables residents to receive one month of free electricity if they are without power for five or more days. Our city suffered, yet we were willing to help others. In the days that followed, our EMS division set up their Forte Field Hospital in Seaside Heights, providing a safe place for medical personnel to assist victims. Our Neptune System, which has tremendous pumping capacity, was utilized by our fire department to remove two million gallons of water from ventilation shafts to the hot tunnel. We have weathered emergencies and storms. This will not break us. We will rebuild what was lost. We will create a stronger water grid. Because our city is stronger today, and because we, the people of our city, pull together during difficult times. It is neighbors helping neighbors, volunteering, donating, and delivering assistance. President John F. Kennedy once said, "We have examined where we are strong, where we succeed, and now it is time to take longer strides for a great new enterprise." We have built infrastructure, we have developed affordable housing, we have upgraded playgrounds and recreational facilities, all to strengthen a fast-growing city. Soon, the Baker Center will transform North Elizabeth, creating the destiny-oriented services, supporting all-in-one buildings. The city has designated a developer for the twenty-two acre site, creating five hundred residential units and containing more than four hundred thousand square feet of retail. Demolition of the present structure is underway, and upon completion, this center will create a consumer destination minutes away from mass transit. Residents and visitors will be able to stroll from store to store along tree-lined walkways, illuminated with decorative lighting. Communities waiting for their train to arrive can shop for that last-minute gift or relax at an outdoor table, surrounded by green space, all within this complex. More than seventy percent of New Jerseyans live in urban areas. These are historic cities like Elizabeth, each with their own unique characteristic and potential. To grow our economy, we must take advantage of those opportunities that make our city stronger, our neighborhoods better, and create higher-paying jobs for today and tomorrow. Together with the Wakeburn Food Corporation and Elbraon Development Company, ground was broken on a new eighty million dollar grocery warehouse, five hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet, temperature-controlled area, which will increase storage capabilities by more than fifty-eight percent and create more than one hundred permanent jobs and be operational at the end of 2013. Sea Freego is strengthening its operations by moving its current location from Dow to North Avenue. This is a sixty million dollar new development. This will feature one hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of refrigerated space. Eighteen thousand square feet is designated for offices and one hundred and fifty new jobs. We're not done creating jobs. One hundred and fifty-two thousand square foot FedEx building is also strengthening opportunities, located on Dow Avenue, a forty-five million dollar development, improved distribution capabilities, and this creates one hundred new jobs and saves more than three hundred in our city. Realizing the potential of our great city is all about leadership, vision, working together, and building partnerships. New Jersey Transit, we must develop a new Midtown train station. From stairwings to elevators, this new state-of-the-art station must increase safety and services, promote intermodal transportation, connectivity and operations. It's going to provide a direct link to Western Union County with the proposed Bus Rapid Transit Project. This surrounding community makes this project even more important because of resources that residents need and want, Mark Spohsby. And I want to thank freestores Sullivan and Estrada for working with us on this over the last year, and look forward to their leadership in the years to come. Shops on Morris Avenue, Midtown Business District, Union County Courthouse, Union County College. This area gets to become even stronger with new retail, residential units, right next to the Midtown Train Station. An RFP will be issued this week for the developments of Parson B and D, bringing high-end apartments, street-level shops, and restaurants. Enjoying a day or a night out will be as easy as walking down the street from residents and visitors to students and professors. Unlimited possibilities will soon be available. The Promising University Boulevard will combine the collegiate experience of King University with the diversity and the appeal of our diverse city. Together, this partnership will create a one-stop entertainment, dining, and shopping experience along Morris Avenue. It'll link two train stations, three municipalities, and two institutions of higher education. Two years ago, President Valverde Ferrari in his State of the University speech talked about creating University Boulevard, connecting King University and Union County College, and the forty thousand students that visit there on a regular basis. There's one missing link, and that's the Elizabeth Train Station. You know, when the City of Elizabeth was faced with a few options in building Jersey Gardens Mall, we were able to figure out the financing with the cooperation of the State of New Jersey. We can do that again today with a commitment in creating economic development by making sure our train station is the centerpiece of a project called University Boulevard, linking King University with Union County College.
The university is becoming very clear to the citizens, and it will generate the kind of jobs that connect to the university in occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech pathology, and particularly in education, where it is the number one producer of teachers. The business development in the office, development in the connection between the two charities, depends on whether or not people feel safe, comfortable, and have a beautiful facility to come in and out. All of this cannot happen unless we face the Elizabeth crisis.
We need to create a whole new structure so that they can then get on Morris and then lean on the University Boulevard and walk the distance to the campus, or walk to faculty housing, or walk to Union County College. You know, the City of Elizabeth has done a study, not only on what the students want at King University, but what the business community wants, and what Union County College wants. And all of it points to how they can increase jobs, how they can increase economic share, how they can increase the diversity of the Hispanic community that exists there, will get more people here, and have more access to the university and the college, as well as the business community here in our city.
This is good for King, this is good for Elizabeth, this is good for New Jersey, and this is the right thing for New Jersey Transit to do, and I know what they do with this
King University has been recognized for its talented students, its compassion to help others. And applying these resources to strengthen our community, University Boulevard will start with an eight-story building which will house wellness centers staffed by graduate students. From occupational and physical therapy to speech-language pathology, this initiative will provide new locations for residents to receive the assistance they need, an active environment for students to gain hands-on experience. And further strengthening services, interest will be sourced from corporate and nonprofits, rental space organizations, and community groups, legislative, consulate offices, providing in-person assistance. Celebrating our heritage, University Boulevard will incorporate restaurants featuring authentic international cuisine and shops, art galleries highlighting talent from different countries, along with retail and office kits. This state-of-the-art destination will include faculty, student housing, satellite offices for city services, and a land museum. The true strength of a community cannot be measured by any number alone, not by its population, not by its size, and not by its buildings. It is measured by the strength and the heart of its people. Our neighborhoods are stronger than ever because of investments that our residents have made, the commitments of local partners, and the shared belief that our strength is reinforced by our ability to meet the needs and exceed expectations, to create foundations for the future, and to implement quality programs. The strength of our spirit will not be broken. We are stronger today because our city works together with the local schools, with nonprofits, colleges, and universities, county, and state, and federal agencies, and above all, we work with our residents. Because we are transforming lives, we are grooming landscapes for a stronger tomorrow. Once again, let's give a round of applause. With a whole point of seventy-six percent of the voters, what can I say? I mean, we're not wrong. Just this afternoon, and just in case you have the time, stop by your Uber restaurant called one Westfield Avenue and Elmore, right in, almost right on the corner there, and we'll have a little refreshment there, so stop by if you have time. Thank you. At this time, we want the public speaking, any resident or taxpayer, elect a best city council in matter. Please come forward, say your name and address, please. Public speaking, any resident or taxpayer, elect a best city council in matter. Please step forward, say your name and address for the record. Seeing none, hold this portion of the meeting. At this time, we ask Reverend Pastor Dixon to come up and give a bid auction. We're so happy that you guys can join us today. God bless you, rise safe, be careful, enjoy the rest of the year.
And I pray, now long we pray that those who have been elected, appointed, and sworn into new traditions may now own this vision that has been so aware of it to us, that together our citizens, Elizabeth, might truly be the queen city of the state of New Jersey. We pray for our president, Yom Vavro, and for the two houses of Congress, that together they might endeavor in 2013 to make this truly one nation under you, in the visible liberty and justice hall. And we pray for our world, that in 2013, peace might truly come on earth, goodwill to it all. This is your service prayer. Amen.
Hostage to John.